Mayor, just give me two minutes, please, and I'll let you know when we're ready on our end.
Welcome to San Gabriel City Council regular meeting. Today's date is Tuesday, May fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Now I call the meeting to order. The time is six thirty-five P M. I believe there's a closed section report from our city attorney. Laurie, can you give the report?
Mayor Liao, Lloyd is trying to get on the phone right now. Perhaps we can do the roll call and the pledge of allegiance, and then he can give the update right after that.
Sure. So, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Liao.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dean.
Yeah.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Minchaca.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pooh.
Here.
Thank you. And tonight's pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. Please rise, place your right hand over your heart, face the flag, and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. So I think our city attorney is still not back, and I guess we can just go ahead, continue. Well, City Clerk, we will start with some announcements for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's meeting is live streamed on Cable Channel Three and our online platforms. Please email all public comments to cityclerk@sgch.org no later than the time the item is considered by the council tonight. Comments will be read for up to three minutes each. Comments received after the end of the public comment section will be forwarded to the city council after the meeting. If you wish to be added to the distribution list to receive city council agendas, please email your request to cityclerk@sgch.org.
Thank you. Next item is approval of agenda order. Are there any objection to the agenda order? From City Councilmember. I see Ron, the agenda order is approved. Is there a motion to approve the agenda order?
I'll move.
Okay. Motion by Councilwoman Minchaca. It's her second.
I second.
Second by Vice Mayor Dean. Assistant City Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Minchaca.
Aye.
Councilmember Pooh.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Liao.
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote of five-zero.
Okay. Well, I saw the city attorney is back. Lloyd, you have the report for our closed session meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council met in closed session with labor negotiator. No final reportable action was taken. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Presentation A: Recognition of Retiring Los Angeles County Librarian Julie Sorenson. Mayor Liao will make the presentation.
Well. I mean. Sorry, I have to cry. For so long. And I hate to see you retire, you know. If you're such an asset to the city of San Gabriel, starting, you know, years ago, you let people to come to the library to do the voters' registration. We did the rural year salvation, single de Mayo salvation. We had artists from the students' competition and English class for second language learner. So, oh my God, you have done so much. And remember, I have a friend donate ten thousand books, and they're very rare books. And yeah, it was amazing because all your work, you know, we appreciate all your work to our community. And the, one time, we worked together because the county thought about, well, you know, since everything is aligned, how, why, you know, world that we need actual libraries open, right? Remember that? And so we worked together, and it was just, well, no, it's not just go to the library for books, but they're a function as the community center. And so, boy, I do appreciate so much for your work. And most fun time is the summer concert, the Beatles, Beatles concert at the library. It's just unforgettable. But anyway, thank you, thank you, thank you, Judy. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you, thank you.
So I actually have a city certificate. And it says Julie Sorenson. The mayor and the city council of the city of San Gabriel wish to extend their sincere appreciation to you for your extra all-invery commitment and dedicated years of service to the Los Angeles County Library. We commend you for your outstanding leadership, and thank you for all that you have contributed to the San Gabriel and our surrounding communities. So present this day, fourth day of May, two thousand twenty-one. Chin Ho Liao Mayor, Tony Dean Vice Mayor, John R. Harrington Councilmember, Denise Minchaca Councilmember, and Jason Pooh Councilmember. Thank you. And I invite Julie Sorenson to speak. Yeah, can you say a few words?
Oh, absolutely. I'm so glad to be here tonight to hear and see all of you. You're some of my favorite people always. I have loved every, I had no intention of retiring. I was never going to retire, never. But life goes on, and I was working at home, and the family dynamic changed and things happened. And, okay, so here I am. But I have enjoyed every minute, every Fourth of July, every concert, every event we worked on. Chin Ho, you've been a wonderful supporter. All of you have been supporters of the library, and we have grown in such a wonderful program. And goodness, it's been a tough year, but we will, we, I'm so happy to have had this thing for fourteen years. So I will not be a stranger to San Gabriel. I love San Gabriel. I'm so happy that you were all in my life, Jason and all of you. And so, thank you so much, and I really appreciate, I might cry too, Chin Ho.
Thank you, Julie. So, well, I also want to mention another person here, Pam. You probably cannot hear us, but Pam Pedavich is the president of Friendswood Library. You know, she has done so much helping the library, raising money, selling books, and, yeah, and buying cookies and drinks. So Pam.
Can she hear us? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think she can hear us. So, okay, well.
Hey. Thank you.
Nice to see you all. And, yeah, next, next item is the proclamation for National Historic Presentation Month. And I'll make the presentation. Well, we have a proclamation. If the staff can show that proclamation, that'd be great, because it's a long one. So whereas a local historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas the city of San Gabriel, as the birthplace of Los Angeles, is home to a wide range, wide range of significant cultural resources and reflect our shared heritage and history. And whereas these resource, including palatial, archaeological, and Native American resource, buildings, structures, objects, historical districts, public art, and parks, cultural landscapes, and natural features, and whereas the retention and stewardship of cultural resources of vital importance to protecting our heritage. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and contribute contribution made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people. And whereas the San Gabriel community continues to demonstrate the commitment to preservation as it grows and develops through ongoing historic and archaeological survey, the nomination of significant cultural resources to the San Gabriel State of National Registers of Historic Places, the protection of its traditional neighborhoods, the integration of historic elements with redevelopment, and the recognition, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic properties. Now, therefore, I, Chin Ho Liao Mayor of the city of San Gabriel, California, on behalf of the city council, Vice Mayor Tony Dean, Councilmember John R. Harrington, Denise Minchaca, and Jason Pooh do hereby proclaim May two thousand twenty-one as National Preservation Month in the city of San Gabriel. I urge the citizens of San Gabriel to join me in this special observance. Date, May fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Chin Ho Liao, the mayor. Thank you. I think that's the proclamation that we prepared for Historic Preservation Month. So next item, I think it's the COVID nineteen briefing. City Clerk, you want to announce that?
Thank you, Mayor. Presentations will be made by Fire Chief Wallace, Police Chief Harris, and City Manager Lazaretto.
Good evening, Mayor Liao, Vice Mayor Dean, and members of the San Gabriel City Council. This is Steve Wallace, fire chief for the city of San Gabriel. And I'm happy to report to you tonight that I'll have a very, very brief COVID update. Start with some statistics. In the city of San Gabriel, we now have a total case count of three thousand two hundred twenty-six cases, which is up thirteen from our last report. And sadly, we've crossed the two hundred threshold in deaths. We now have two hundred and one deaths in the city, which is up four from our last report. Little more good news is that fifty-five point four percent of our city has been vaccinated, and we average the ten surrounding cities. The average is fifty-four point one nine percent. So San Gabriel is slightly above the average, which is a great news. As you may have heard today, LA County has moved into the yellow tier in the state color coding system. There's only seven of the fifty-eight counties in the state that have moved to that tier. And Los Angeles County is the first one in the Southern California region to achieve that. We are expecting a new health officer order tomorrow detailing modifications to the current order, and that information will be made available to all the departments as it comes out. And we expect the new order to take effect on Thursday. Within the fire department, our PPE stores continue to be quite robust. We have no members of the department out sick or injured with COVID. And we'd just like our city, remind the city to keep up the excellent work and what they're doing to stay safe. We know we're all starting to get back outside and get back to business as usual, but we just wanted to give you a reminder to stay safe, mask up and distance where possible, and just keep an eye on each other. And that's my end of report for the evening.
Thank you. And I think next one is the Police Chief Harris, right?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This is Gene Harris, the police chief for the city of San Gabriel. This will also be a very brief COVID briefing. We are, as a police department, still offering one hundred percent of our service delivery. We have no persons or their families adversely impacted at this time from COVID. We are robustly taking advantage of the many stores that we've gotten from the donations with regard to our PPE, so we're very thankful for that. And like the fire chief said, I would like to echo that in that we thank the community for staying vigilant, and we want you to continue that so that we can continue in the positive direction that we're headed in. From a service perspective, we are definitely making sure to let folks know as we go on calls that we're still trying to follow all of the health orders, both internally and as we go to calls externally with the folks in the community. You have been doing a good job, and we just want you to continue to do so. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Chief Harris. And I believe next one, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm extremely happy to be able to talk about the potential of reopening City Hall and also about the possibility of having city council meetings in public once again. I look forward to the day that we all get to sit up on the dais together and have these meetings back in public with people actually at the podium with their questions and comments, and our decision-making even more in public than it is now. As far as the reopening of City Hall, as you all heard from the chief, you know, things are reopening quickly, and as soon as this week, we'll have a further opening of businesses. And if things continue the way that we anticipate, by June fifteenth, the state will be fully reopened. So I'm using that as sort of the target date to start the reopening. We'll make our final preparations here in City Hall. We have a couple of policies that we want to polish up and a couple of other details, but shortly after the fifteenth, we'll be ready to reopen. I want to stress that all of our online options and our appointment-making options that we implemented during COVID, we're gonna hope and encourage people to use those options because I think it's even more convenient for folks to be able to do things without coming in. But we're targeting after the Fourth of July holiday, so that Monday when we come back, we would be fully open, and you would not have to make an appointment to come into City Hall. You could come in anytime you want, as well as the lobbies of our other public facilities. So that would be the lobbies of both of our fire stations, our police station, our community services building, our Public Works facility, and all of our other facilities. Again, we would still encourage appointments and online and call, but people would be able to walk in and get service from all the employees. The employees would be back to work in City Hall and the facilities as of that date as well. We may keep some employees on a very sporadic telecommuting because it does still work for some of our folks for their job functions, but the majority of folks will be back here full-time every day. As far as in-person council meetings, my proposal would be the same, although it's fully up to the council for what you're all comfortable with. As of July the fifth, again, that would be, or the sixth, I think, is our next council meeting after that. But it would be, again, fully open to the public in the council chambers, if that's what the council is agreeable to. We would put plexiglass partitions up between each of your spots up on the dais. It would be encouraged to wear masks in those meetings, but it would be obviously up to the individual council members, although I think the health order would still require it in indoor settings like that. I would propose that we only have the council up at the dais to further spread you all out as much as possible. So the five of you would be at the dais, and then the city attorney and I would be sitting down in the first row of the public seats to keep things spread out, and the city clerk would be in her normal spot, along with the assistant city clerk. And then the members of the public would be allowed in the building as normal. And whatever the health order is at that time, if we have to limit it to fifty percent capacity, we would do that. But on most of our normal nights, I would anticipate we wouldn't have that sort of an issue. So I leave it back to the, to the council. If that sounds like an agreeable plan to you all, we're looking at other options too to increase the air quality, looking at the cost of a couple of air purifiers that we could put in the council chambers to circulate and purify the air. And on those days when it's comfortable, I can even see us opening those two doors that are behind the council dais and having airflow from the outside fresh air included as well. So I kick it back to you, Mayor Liao, and if you wouldn't mind pulling the council on what their comfort level is with that. But if that works for everybody, then that first meeting in July, we would be back in the council chambers. I will say that we don't have an ability to do a hybrid system, meaning that we, our technology won't allow having some council members on a Zoom call and some council members being live. If council members are not able to make the meeting, we would have to go back to our old format of having a telephone on the dais and only picking up audio. So it really is an all-or-nothing proposition for being back in. And with that, Mayor Liao, I would turn it back over to you, and I'm ready to implement whatever council desires.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, any city council member comments or question for, for either chiefs or city manager? I see, possible, well, also man Pooh, and then councilwoman Minchaca.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mark, for those thoughtful comments and proposals. I think that, well, well, first of all, I believe we should agendize this discussion for the next, you know, regularly scheduled council meeting. And included in that, I would hope to also have an update with respect to state legislation that could affect this decision because I think there's some bills that would permanently authorize this type of, you know, Zoom meetings. Not to say that that's what I would favor, but, but, and, you know, just want to make sure that we have all the best information available at that time. And, yeah, I mean, if it's safe to do so, then, of course, you know, meeting in person is generally preferable. And I think that it'll be a little bit of a shock to the system because for all of us, I think, you know, even the idea of, of other things reopening at this point in time, you know, myself personally, I know that I'm not quite yet ready, but definitely will be there when the time comes. And I think that, little market, you know, I think it's a significant, in a way, almost like emotional moment as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Minchaca.
Yes, I'm actually full agreement with what Mark said. I just wanted to add that for public comment, I believe we can do both still. Is that correct, Mark? Where if people want to widen, then they can continue to do that. If they can't be there in person, Sharon or Chief City Clerk could continue on with that. Would that be an option?
It certainly would. Thank you for reminding me of that. I do think we should continue some of those conveniences that we have made available for folks to comment in multiple ways. I'll work with our city clerk's team to see if we can have a printer or some, something up on the, their area in order to have comments read as soon as they come in, because I do think that is a luxury that we should continue on. At a very minimum, though, we'll have comments received up to the meeting be able to be read during the meeting.
Great. And then I do like the idea of, I think I actually made that suggestion to you early on about the doors in the back, because I think ventilation is very important. I understand that you're looking at the filters or the air purifiers of sorts. Not too costly is my understanding, but having that fresh air, natural ventilation, I think, makes a really big difference. So I really push for that myself. And thank you for already kind of thinking it through, but as Councilmember Pooh said, we do need to see what the latest is. Very cognizant of the fact that many other cities and countries actually are going through their second and third round of closing, so I'm hoping LA will not be one of those. But a lot can happen from now till July sixth. But thank you for at least, you know, initiating the process, and we will adjust. We will pivot like we've always have. Thank you.
You're welcome, Councilwoman Minchaca, and to Councilman Pooh's comments about the legislation. There is pushback from some of the, like, the League of California Cities and other organizations just because of the technology part and the cost of doing that, of having a sort of a simultaneous meeting. Not to say that we wouldn't support it, and we could figure it out. It's just a matter of when and what that cost would be. But I think the league supports being open and transparent. That was just their biggest concern on that bill.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Any other, the Vice Mayor Dean?
Yeah, okay, yeah. The sense, the, the, the Councilmember Pooh and the Councilmember Minchaca, the, the comments. Yeah, the, like, City Manager Mark mentioned, okay, if the, we come back to the chamber, so it's, it's only for the, like, council member if everybody on the chamber or everybody on the Zoom, right, from my understanding, it's only for the council member or for the, also include the executive team?
It would be, we could not have the council members on a Zoom call with our technology right now if we were filming live from the council chambers. So we would be able to have members of the public there, we'd be able to have a normal council meeting. But if one of the council members wasn't comfortable, or let's say they were on vacation and calling in as, or at a conference as, as we used to do, it wouldn't be on a Zoom format like this. It would be calling in, and we would have just the audio, not the video.
Okay.
It would still broadcast our meetings, so you could still.
Okay.
On YouTube and on our Channel Three. We just, right now, wouldn't be able to do, having a video of that one or two or three council people from offsite.
Okay. So actually, the public is still can through the Channel Three or audio to listen to whatever we discuss, right?
That's exactly right. And they'll see the council, and they'll see what you're discussing as you're discussing.
Okay. So for the, if the, the one council member, if he cannot attend it, the people cannot see him, just audio, right? For the, for the, the council in the chamber, they, they should be, they can, they still audio, or they can see them?
Both audio and video. So only the one council person who's not in the council chamber.
Okay.
Audio.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mark. Yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's a good, like, right now, it's a good time to prepare everything. So hopefully, we can open soon. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Harrington, you have comments about this?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have a comment on it. I just, I agree with Councilmember Pooh that we should probably agendize it to discuss it fully. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. But I think it's a good idea. It's about time to move forward. I attend the FEMA program. It's a public assistance program, and they reimburse everything, hundred percent, for all the public facility, including our city council chambers. And so the date is from January twenty-first this year to September thirtieth. So all the PPE expenses, plexiglasses, and we can hire a contractor, a company, to come to the City Hall to disinfecting all the public areas, and all that can be recovered by FEMA's costs. So this is very good news. And I know Chief Wallace had dealt with, you know, FEMA before, but I think this is time for all the buildings, you know, we, we ready to open up. I think for all the buildings, we should look into the air filters, but also cleaning, you know, with sanitation crew and for all the area. And again, you know, we, fortunately, we got ten thousand masks donated last week. As a matter of fact, next, tomorrow, I have another three thousand, and then a week after, I have another three thousand bottles of hand sanitizers. So, you know, we, we have enough for, for the public that come to the, you know, City Hall. And we, you know, if they don't have masks, we can give them masks and, and, you know, and we can provide hand sanitizer for them. and, you know, and we can provide hand sanitizer for them too. So so if we haven't uh filed this, i- it has to be a program, you know, again, it's the January first this year till September thirtieth. So whatever expenses uh we can use it. But another uh important point is the uh Emergency Operations Center. And I believe, you know, we've been doing some work uh and fire department can point that, but also uh the our um mission playhouse, we've been using playhouse for uh vaccination site and domestic uh testing site. All these can be reimbursed. So that's great. I didn't realize that, you know, we've been using Mission Playhouse, and we never get paid for doing that, but it's about time we filed the program and say we've been using that. And so this, this is great news uh that we can uh get funding uh to help our uh revenue for for Mission Playhouse. And if the streamlined uh application process according to them, so it's very easy. And so that's the guarantee, the FEMA dot gov, uh all we have to do, I guess, uh Chief Harris Wallace knows how to deal with the uh FEMA. So another concern I have is the vaccines, okay? Uh we try to work with the uh one of our nonprofit group, and they claim they can uh, you know, administer thousands of vaccines. But according to FEMA, any of these nonprofits group, they have to provide legal responsibilities. So and that's why I, you know, I'm trying to get hold of the this doctor group and see if they can uh be responsible uh for the vaccines that we're trying to uh to implement in 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 our city. But another problem that I run into is the uh because a Harold Christians or East Valley, uh they don't have the big freezer, so they cannot have uh Pfizer vaccines. They only can have Moderna and Johnson Johnson. So, you know, for anyone under age uh sixteen, I guess the only vaccine is Pfizer. So I guess, you know, I don't know if we can get involved uh with that and working with the school district or just let the county uh handle that problem, because, you know, again, we don't uh have the facility to store the Pfizer vaccines, and that's, that is the that that is the problem. I did ask uh uh County uh Health Department and said, yeah, because, you know, we we they don't have it, and then that's why they don't receive Pfizer. Uh but you know, why don't you do have a solution to that? Chief Wallace? Or Mark?
I I can jump in there real quick, Mayor Liao. The the refrigeration and the freezing problem with Pfizer vaccine is a challenge. We don't have a facility within the city that I know of to handle that. Uh, that's why I think we've mostly been seeing the Moderna and J and J. We could certainly do some research and and see what's available there to see if there's a way to store the Pfizer. But but that has proved to be a big challenge within our area.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think uh that's enough for uh the COVID nineteen briefing. Uh, let's move on to the next item, public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. And Mr. Mayor, we do have four comments this evening.
Thank you.
The first is from Pam Pam Pedovic and Irene Chapman, co-presidents of the SGFOL, and reads as follows. "On behalf of the Friends of the San Gabriel Library, we want to congratulate Julie Sorenson on her retirement as San Gabriel's library director. She has been a dynamic, involved, and enthusiastic leader of the library's programs and outreach to the community. Julie was wholly committed to supporting San Gabriel, as evidenced by her work with the Centennial Celebration Committee and her active roles in San Gabriel Rotary and Coordinating Council, as well as her involvement with SGWF. We will miss her kindness, can-do spirit, and ability to get hard things done. Her replacement indeed has big shoes to fill. Good luck, Julie. Please come back as a volunteer." The next comment is from Senia Lubasic, a resident on Delmar Avenue, and reads as follows. "Good evening, Mayor Liao and councilmembers. I wanted to address you first to thank you and recognize your proclamation in honor of National Preservation Month. I am glad that San Gabriel joins in the nationwide recognition of the places that matter to communities. The neighborhoods, buildings, and landscapes that tell the stories of our community are what makes San Gabriel wonderful. I would hope that, as we make progress on our historic context statement, that we also work harder to actually speak for those neighborhoods, buildings, and landscapes. We have much to be proud of in San Gabriel. Wonderful legacy businesses, unique and historically intact neighborhoods, incredible stories of people and groups who have shaped the character and cultures of our city. Having a proclamation and ordinance and a commission does not mean that we have spoken for our collective history. I had asked in January that our city make a concerted effort to use this month to highlight legacy businesses in San Gabriel. Family-owned businesses that have served our community for more than fifty years and that have amazingly survived the pandemic. If we cannot do the simple work of highlighting our local businesses, how then will we do the harder work of protecting and preserving the resources that tell our stories? You have a commission that is willing and eager to work. Please allow us to bring brick and mortar meaning to the proclamation." The next comment is from Martin E. Delgado, Community Library Manager, and reads as follows. "The LA County Library is very pleased to announce the reopening of the San Gabriel Library for select in-person service on Monday, May tenth, as Los Angeles County nears the yellow tier of the state's blueprint for a safer economy. San Gabriel Library will safely reopen at seventy-five percent capacity while also maintaining six feet of physical distance for customers. In preparation for reopening additional doors to the public, LA County Library is working diligently to ensure safety protocols are met and appropriate preventative measures are in place. The reopening is part of a phased reopening plan that prioritizes library openings based on geographic location, building availability, and the ability to accommodate physical distance guidelines and public health protocols. The library's ongoing sidewalk services and book drops will remain available. Library open hours will be Mondays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, eleven AM to six PM, and Tuesdays, one PM to eight PM. The library is closed on Saturday and Sunday. For more information, please contact our San Gabriel Library or visit the LA County Library website at lacountylibrary.org. Thank you."
So that's all?
No, Mayor, we actually have one more.
One more?
Thanks. This is from Tasha Wahy and reads as follows. "Dear Honorable City Council Members, Yesterday, while executing the ongoing Adeline stormwater capture project, the San Gabriel Public Works crew struck and ruptured a gas line while utilizing a backhoe in the front of my home located at four nineteen Adeline Drive. The utilities were apparently correctly located and marked by USA Underground Service Alert. Proper procedure at a minimum is to pothole by hand excavation to visibly locate the gas line. After locating a gas line, decisions can then be made on how to safely employ the backhoe. This was not done by our city's public works crew, as I understand the proper procedure for excavating near known utilities. The entire point of USA is to avoid reconnaissance by backhoe, which frequently leads to catastrophic results. I am bringing this concern to you because people's lives, including my two young children who were home during this incident, were unnecessarily put in danger by a lack of proper procedure. My six-year-old daughter was no more than fifty feet from the side of the rupture. While a crew member did immediately inform my family about the rupture, it was clear that he did understand the proper protocol for notification and evacuation. In the midst of a global pandemic, when when most citizens are functioning in an abundance of caution, it seems the city was extremely negligent and dangerous. Can the council please ensure my family's safety, my neighbor's safety, and your crew's safety during the completion of this project?" And Mr. Mayor, that concludes the comments.
Thank you. I think um, you know, I see uh great, you have a comment regarding that?
Yes, thank you. Um, this is Greg Devink, the Public Works Director and City Engineer for the City of San Gabriel. So um uh Mayor Liao, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, I'd like to address this uh letter. Um, a little bit of background is yesterday was the first day we actually started construction on one of several Measure W-funded projects where we are digging out the ground and the in the gutter area and excavating down, filling the area with rock and pouring permeable concrete over the top in locations where gutters aren't flowing properly in the city, and we get standing water. Sometimes the street wasn't really graded very steeply, or sometimes roots raised gutters. Um, just the various problems happen, and we get standing water, which on its own is a hazard to possibly traffic or mosquitoes or algae growth or other things. So um what the crews did, um, we did break a gas line yesterday with a backhoe bucket. But prior to going out and excavating at all, we did call USA. We waited the mandatory um days of advance notice for the various utility companies to come out and mark the ground with painted markings. And the letter is correct. When the markings indicate that a utility excavation or utility is within your excavation area, you are required to hand excavate to locate it first before you bring in heavy equipment. So the requirement for USA in this particular utility, which was a gas line marked in yellow, the USA marking uh requirement is they have to be within twenty-four inches of the line underground. It doesn't indicate depth, but twenty-four inches to either side. We started excavating beyond twenty-four inches, so the normal expectation is that the utility is not in your ex- excavation. So with twenty-four inches being the statutory requirement of responsibility for marking, the line we hit was fifty-one inches away from the marking. And I do have a photo with a tape measure that I intend to include in the Thursday update to council. But essentially, the law is um twenty-four inches, within twenty-four inches of the yellow line, we would have had to hand excavate beyond that. The requirement's gone because the expectation is it's properly marked, and it was not. So staff did call out USA. Staff excavated more than two feet away from the markings where hand excavation is not required. Um, immediately upon rupturing the line, staff did contact the fire department and the gas company, who both responded very quickly. And they went door knocking to inform the neighbors, and and I'm glad the resident appreciates that we we did that part right. Um, in addition to that, the City Manager's Office also issued a public notification. And um, so I I do believe, uh, well, the fire department and gas rep, sorry, responded promptly, and um what Public Works staff did then was stay on the job site, close the street, and assist in any way they can. And so really, it's my opinion that Public Works staff handled every detail, including the emergency situation properly, and continued working on the project today. The excavation work is now complete, and the gas company repair was was done yesterday afternoon. But the excavation is done, the gravel is in the hole, we will be pouring concrete tomorrow. So um I I do hope the resident who wrote this letter now feels at least comfortable that we're not going to break anything tomorrow. It's it's the remaining work is pouring concrete and finishing up the street. So the really, the the risk of excavation damages is behind us for this location. But I I do want to, I I hope the resident understands that we didn't do anything wrong and that council understands. Uh, we followed all the rules properly, including all the emergency responses, and it's uh, you know, it's an accident that it broke, but really, the first accident was it wasn't marked properly in the first place. It it does happen. I've seen it happen several times, and you know, the system is pretty good, but it's not perfect. So um to the resident, if you'd like to have any further questions or anything, feel free to call me or email me. Uh, but I but I do the the one point of your letter I disagree with was that they were properly marked. I I believe they were not, and I don't expect any invoicing from the gas company because by the measurements, we're not at fault. So that's, if you have any additional questions, please let me know.
Okay, thank you, Greg. So can you uh contact uh that person and just send an email and explain uh what you just mentioned, and so she can have a better understanding? You know, because myself, I had a gas leak and I called uh gas company. They 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 ducked up with with shuffle. It's 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 all by hand. So but anyway, maybe it's a different story, so um but I I think we want to uh assure, uh make sure that uh, you know, our residents are safe during this type of uh uh incident. So maybe you should uh send her an email.
Sure, I'll I'll contact the resident. I was presuming the resident was listening, but you're right, maybe they're not.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. Uh, next item, please.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. Mayor, we have not received requests from the public to pull any items.
Okay, great. So what any councilmember would like to pull an item for separate discussion?
Now, Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
One second.
All right, so a motion by Councilman uh Pooh and uh Councilwoman, I'm gonna check that second. So let's vote. Yeah, City uh Clerk, can you?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Minchaka?
Aye.
Councilmember Pooh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ding?
Aye.
Mayor Liao?
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Okay, next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no public hearings or continued business. So the next item is new business item A, update on retail landscape in San Gabriel. The presentation will be made by Economic Development Manager Dominika Megardichin.
Thank you, thank you. So I guess uh Dominika, it's your time to show us the landscape in San Gabriel.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor and council, Dominika Megardichin, Economic Development Manager. Next slide, please. The item before you is an update on the retail landscape in San Gabriel. As we know, COVID nineteen has affected and changed many industries, including the local retail industry in San Gabriel. Staff has pulled together this report to provide an update on our existing retail landscape, data on the impacts of the pandemic on our sales tax, and the proactive efforts in place for new and expanded retail spaces coming online. While we see the light at the end of the tunnel as we move to less restrictive tiers in reopening the economy, we are very aware of the impacts this pandemic has had on our community. Prior to the pandemic, our local economy was bustling. Our hotels were above eighty-five to eighty-five percent capacity, and we were focused on tourism efforts and a growth trajectory. Our efforts through the city's ten-point plan for recovery, resiliency, and reinvestment have helped our business community weather the storm. Rather than taking a wait-and-see approach to our retail future, staff contacted the city's major developers and landowners to gauge their ideas for the future San Gabriel. Next slide, please. COVID nineteen has completely changed industries. COVID-19 has completely changed industries. Many businesses in various categories have downsized or closed completely. Commercial real estate continues to be impacted as office spaces are affected by remote working options that provide significant cost savings for companies. Gyms, fitness centers, movie theaters, some of the largest footprints, some of the largest footprints in real estate, based on certainty, closed indefinitely or pull out of commitments for future locations, all creating major waves in the real estate market. Next slide, please. Our staff continues to facilitate assistance to our business community as they work to comply with protocols while staying open. Our outdoor business permit program does not have a sunset date, but we are starting conversations with those businesses interested in making some of these elements a more permanent fixture and facilitating these discussions on a case-by-case basis. Some things from the pandemic are here to stay. Curbside delivery, app-based delivery services help businesses to expand their services and offerings to their customers. Next slide, please. According to HDL Companies, St. Gabriel's tax revenue has been hit up to forty percent across industries, with restaurants, specialty and apparel stores and hotels most hard-hit due to impacts of the tourism industry, limitations on indoor business operations and changes in spending patterns. The total taxable sales impact from Q4 2019 compared to Q4 2020 shows that St. Gabriel is down sixteen point six percent. While at the same time, Los Angeles County is down seven point seven, Southern California is down two point seven, and the state of California is down two percent. Much of our business community is made up of restaurants, personal care establishments, hotels and other retail, which have been the hardest-hit industries. Next slide, please. That being said, St. Gabriel businesses have largely been resilient, though we've seen that those who have been creative and flexible and willing to pivot have come out stronger than some of our businesses that have not been as willing to make changes and be adaptable. Our business license data shows that most of our businesses have renewed their licenses and we have a number that are delinquent, but our finance department is working with them on compliance. We suspect that some of that one hundred and seventy-nine that are delinquent are businesses that may have closed, but we will be able to provide more information as we work on compliance. Staff continues to stay proactive with our outreach and information to the community. We've created the Business Assistance Fund and are helping cover business license and other fees so that these are not a barrier to our businesses staying open. And we're also engaging property owners and landlords on a local business census. We will also utilize tools through our membership with the St. Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership for retail vacancy reports that will help in our site selection and tenant attraction efforts. Next slide, please. We have also created a new St. Gabriel marketing packet that tells the St. Gabriel story. The marketing packet is included as attachment aid to this item. Claudia Jellin with the Economic Development Division is a Jill of many traits. Thankfully, graphics and data presentation are among them. This marketing packet is shared with realtors, developers, landlords, really all stakeholders who could benefit from learning about and promoting our community. After tonight's presentation, we will also make it available on the Economic Development website and share it through our channels. Next slide. Staff continues to facilitate the review, entitlement and construction of seventeen major developments in town, which together introduce a new hotel with two hundred and twenty-two rooms, over fifteen hundred residential units, two hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of commercial space, ninety-eight thousand square feet of medical space and a new food hall in the Mission District. As mentioned before, we are engaged and proactive in addressing our existing retail space while also wanting to be proactive in our attraction efforts for new tenants for the new space coming online. While COVID-19 may have slowed some project timelines, they are in progress. Staff has engaged our developers and industry professionals to discuss their current projects, anticipated changes and assistance they may need as feedback has been largely positive with an outlook about doing business in St. Gabriel being a positive experience. Next slide, please. The Developers Group has mentioned that updates to specific plans and parking studies may help in delivering new tenants to the community, especially as parking requirements are often a limitation to our built-out city. Next slide, please. To summarize some of the discussion points with our developers, we need to plan for the future, which may include autonomous vehicles and other disruptive business models. We will continue to promote outdoor dining and business opportunities and encourage our tenants to create a sense of community in these areas. We must rethink large spaces as commercial real estate continues to be impacted. Rents have been impacted by COVID-19 almost by half. This is a significant hit, but typical rate, rent rates are expected to return. The outlook is generally positive and there is interest and need in curbside delivery, short-term parking to help with parking flow and assist our businesses to expand their service offering. While City Hall remains closed to the public for now, the Community Development Department continues to take steps to ensure that there's no laps in service for our customers. We continue facilitating virtual roundtable meetings, providing a business concierge one-stop service. While changes may be on the horizon for some of our developments, our developers consider us a partner and will continue to keep us informed of their plans and efforts. In fact, we have partnered with one developer in their efforts to deliver a national grocery brand to the city and have offered to partner with the others in similar tenant attraction efforts. Next slide, please. On the horizon, continued development, deployment of the COVID-19 vaccine and the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 are expected to further support consumer spending. While vacancies and limitations on businesses have had significant impacts to our sales tax and major developments have been slowed but not stalled, we continue providing service and supporting the business community. We're committed to identifying and pursuing the highest and best use of our sites. Next slide, please. This concludes my presentation and staff from the Community Development Department is on the line for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dominika. So, there any questions, comments for our staff? Anyone?
Hello.
I saw Councilmember Poo. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, I first want to commend staff for engaging in all these proactive programs as and conducting this business survey. And then also for members of the community who may be watching, I think it's really worth it to look at the actual agenda materials because the marketing brochure that's in here is actually is like really well-done and full of really good information. So, so thank you to the staff for all of this. The, there is one question or two questions I have is the the survey that you're conducting, you know, reaching out to property owners and landlords for information on all current tenants and the local business census, when do you anticipate that this will be available?
We're working with finance this week to finalize the letter that we'll be sending to the landlords and property owners. Some of the information that we hope to capture is how much vacant space they have, who their current tenants are, also to confirm the unit numbers. We anticipate, assuming we get that out next week, we could probably bring that back to council hopefully within a month, month and a half, assuming we have some good response rate.
Okay, great. Let's see, so we're looking at maybe mid-June?
We do have a Mission District update slated for June fifteenth. We can definitely bring it back by that date.
Great. And that was actually my next question because then there, so are these their two separate efforts here? The, what have been engagement, engagement of stakeholders in the Mission District and then the local business census or survey? Those are two separate.
In economic development, nothing is, nothing is separate. Everything's related by some stretch of the imagination. So, we just needed a little bit more time. We are making some traction in the, in the Mission District. Wanted to bring that update back to you, an update on the ACOM study and our next steps and our engagement efforts there. We just needed to borrow a little bit more time to complete that update for council.
Okay, I'm just writing down some notes. As part of your local business census, have you considered perhaps also asking the businesses what percentage of their business they, they think, you know, comes and goes via ride-sharing, like Lyft and Uber? I feel like, you know, if there's going to be any movement towards changing the parking ratios for future, in future years, we need to better understand the extent to which, you know, our business community actually is more, or rather, our consumers, you know, actually utilize ride-sharing more and therefore don't need the parking. And, you know, I think that it's going to be difficult because COVID has been such a different year, you know, for everything. But it does seem like as far as some of the businesses I've been able to visit that have the outdoor dining, that the reduction in parking due to some of that outdoor dining, you know, taking up the parking space, hasn't really had too much of an impact on like not being able to get parking or so forth. But again, a lot of those were in some of the plazas, are in some of the plazas that do have underground parking structures and so forth. So, I mean, it can't be a one-size-fits-all solution, but I do think that it's an interesting, it's an interesting question because as we do look to the future, then, you know, the very nature of transportation could be dramatically different. And there may not be the need for as much parking as, you know, what we currently have in the code. So, so I think that it is an interesting area to look at because either that surface parking area could then be used for outdoor dining or outdoor retail space and that actually, in my mind, creates a more lively streetscape, more engaging, more pedestrian-friendly. But, or, you know, for future developments, it would, it would completely change the formula. You know, it would change their pro formas because one of the largest costs is constructing those, the underground, you know, parking structures. So, thank you for your.
Yes, thank you for that, Councilman. And I believe there was a question at the beginning. And I'm also telepathically tapping into my counterpart in planning Samantha. As we've been very creative in handling things on a case-by-case basis during COVID, we also are very, trying to be very responsible and also plan for a post-COVID. As we did pre-COVID, parking was a premium. It's, it definitely gets very dense. We have a parking issue again under economic development. Having a parking issue is kind of a good thing, but that's a different topic. So, we do handle things on a case-by-case basis because each site is so very different. The letter that will be going out to the landlords and property owners may not be the best place to survey our actual retail tenants. But what we can do is ahead of the June fifteenth, we can survey our businesses via our e-newsletter. I'll also get a Survey Monkey survey up on the city website and work with John RPIO to kind of blast that to the community and see if we can get a good response there to include that in that update.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Any other, oh, I see, Councilwoman, the check.
Thank you, Mayor. I too wanted to applaud the efforts of the Economic Development Team. Really rose higher than, you know, anyone. Well, we didn't even know how high we can go. But you really did with, it just, this department's different from last year, completely different and, and stronger. There's actually staff now. I think we didn't even have, we have many of you that weren't even here yet. So that's definitely an advantage, but what you've accomplished, you know, during COVID is, is something to be very proud of. And you continue, you know, you have such a strong team. So I am really looking forward to what post-COVID will bring. But the reality is, it will never be like it was before. So, and I'm glad that in this presentation, you're recognizing it. You are moving forward and there are things that we are going to keep and we need to keep. I wanted to ask a couple of things regarding the permanent outdoor dining. That is going to take place, you know, for many of our businesses. Some, I understand they want to go back indoor, they don't want to have to deal with it, but I think there are many more that want it to continue. So what is, what is the process? Because if there's no sunset on it, what is the process? What do we tell our businesses just to kind of wait for us to kind of go through, you know, the ordinances? Or maybe you could just summarize it briefly. What do we tell our businesses?
Of course. I'll start us off and then I'll have my counterpart Samantha maybe give a little bit more detail to the actual application process. But for those businesses that have taken us up on the temporary, we are going to be reaching out to them and discussing with them if this is something that they want to be, to see more permanently. It may not be as extensive as their setups right now as they do take up a significant portion of ground-level parking areas, sidewalks and things like that, that we normally wouldn't use. We do want to talk to them on a case-by-case basis and see if they're able to safely accommodate, of course, following ADA law and accessibility and safety and everything, if they could accommodate a couple of extra tables and chairs, but that does have a review process. So Samantha, can you give us just a quick update on what that process might look like?
Yes, Dominika. This is Samantha Tiwasa, Planning Manager. Dominika generally covered what the process may potentially look like. It will be monitored on a case-by-case basis. Currently, the temporary outdoor dining, the application, I believe, has a ninety-day application period that staff follows up on, again, to monitor the needs of the businesses. And following county and state regulations, staff is looking at the balance of those needs. So as the buildings open up and the occupancy numbers change, what we are currently looking at is then how that transitions from outside to inside. And then also the parking needs once the businesses open up as well. So it is something that city staff is following along with county and state regulations and really looking at the individual setups of each property and each business and their needs. Just the setup of each dining business or retail business, whatever it may be, is so different on a case-by-case basis that as each business responds and contacts staff to provide the updates on their needs, staff is, you know, oftentimes going out to the site really to evaluate those needs and to adjust the applications even currently temporarily to make sure that it makes sense for the businesses. So as each application and business comes into City Hall, we will take a look at those temporary outdoor applications and where the opportunity exists to maybe turn those setups into more permanent setups. And what that is would be factoring in, again, the occupancy numbers, the total occupancy numbers between inside and outside. And as Dominika mentioned, whatever accessibility, fire, building codes that may trigger. So, well, we'll take a look at that as the businesses come in and contact city staff.
Okay, so you don't know the, the, there is not sixty-day, it's depends.
Correct, yes. The situation is just so fluid and transitional. So it's just something that staff is monitoring, but there isn't a concrete outline process for businesses to follow at the moment. But it is something that we can look into as we move forward.
Okay, and you'll be bringing the council along to be doing future presentations, so we have an understanding also.
Yes, of course. And we'll also be, we'll also be engaging any businesses that didn't take us up on the temporary efforts. That doesn't mean that they can't also consider some permanent outdoor dining options. We want to be all-inclusive. We see that this is something that's here to stay and it only benefits us to promote it.
Great, thank you. And then my second question was regarding the taxable sales impact. And remember that we had said we expected a 25% drop, but we showed 16%, which is still a high number. But I'm just wondering, the reason it, it might not have had such a profound impact of 25%. Again, I understand that was just a projection. How, was it the online sales that kind of helped soften that blow? I guess it's Will or Mark? Or why was it under, in our projections? What, what happened?
Thanks, Councilwoman Munchakka. I'll actually let Dominica answer this because she was just about ready to give a phenomenal response. And then I'll, I'll fill it if she needs some more.
Thank you. Councilwoman, I don't have the HGL report directly in front of me. But I do know that many of our businesses and, and with our restaurants and our hotels being the hardest hit, they've also been able to pivot during this time. So the hotels, while they've been significantly impacted, they did do better than expected on some weekends when they were able to accommodate hosting events that were to be filmed and televised. They actually did see about 80% occupancy, which is kind of unheard of during COVID. They were able to pivot to staycation and, and kind of advertising and marketing to the local folks and even residents who were tired of working from home and just needed to get out of their four walls. So we did see some of our businesses that were able to pivot. Some of them also really did take advantage of the delivery services and kind of pivoting how they provided service. So while our spending and how we, our habits may have changed during COVID-19, the businesses that were able to pivot and kind of get creative, I know I've said pivot probably 10 times today already, but that's the word of the pandemic. So.
It's the 2020 word.
Able to do it, you know, and I think that really helped soften the blow.
What about the online sales, you know, the, the county, the pool? How do we fare? Do we come along? I mean, do we get more than we expected maybe in that pool?
Yeah, Councilwoman Munchakka, I'll echo everything that Dom said and then indicate, yeah, that we got more than we thought from the county pool because of all the online sales. That may change in the future as people go back to going to malls and things, but we expect some of that to, to stay permanent. But also, the sort of winners in the COVID pandemic have been the grocery stores and some of the fast casual restaurants. So even though not all food at grocery stores is taxable, a lot of what was purchased in the pandemic is taxable. So places like Hawaii Supermarket and others did better than they had in the past. And then you look at places like our pizza restaurants. I mean, they had years that were better than years prior to COVID. And so some of those made up for those restaurants that were closed and some of those industries that were closed. So ultimately, the state saw bigger numbers than they thought they would. The county saw bigger numbers than the county thought they would. And we luckily saw bigger numbers than we thought we would.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you so much. And see. So thank you, and I look forward to future presentations and, and appreciate all the effort.
Thank you so much. Any other, see, council member? That comments or questions?
Vice Mayor? Dean? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, other reporter, it's, you have the question for the, the Dominica, the taxable sales impact, that's only for the retail or the include the hotel, the occupancy, the tax, the average?
That is a very good question for Mark.
The, the taxable sales only is for the retail sales tax. The TOT is a separate type line.
Okay. The TOT, it's, we don't have the, any, any data come out yet? How much the, they, they reduce?
We will have numbers, updated numbers at our next budget meeting in early June. We're waiting for the last quarter numbers to come in. But they are about what we predicted they were going to be. So very much down from, from what they were two years ago.
Okay. The taxable sales tax, I also want to see that the calculation is to include our major SD on, without a ma, major SD.
It, it includes measure SG, but I will tell you that measure SG has done even better than, than we could have hoped. It come in, rather than being just 75% of our regular sales tax number, it was almost 100% of our regular sales tax number because of the online shopping and some other things. So long story short, it includes that, but that measure SG number is much better than we predicted.
Okay. All right, okay. But, but is it, I just want a data. It's if, without the, the major SG, so what kind of percentage you would reuse for our retail sales tax? If.
We can.
Yeah.
We can get you an exact number, but it would have been at least 25% of a percentage down.
25%, that's the way put it, right? So to for the, for our, the last year budget, that's I, I remember. Okay, that's hell. And because I think right now I didn't know the, on the DC report, I have, we have the 2,700, the business. That's include the, the home base of business, right? So it's, how many home base for this 2,700?
These are very good questions. I have it in my email somewhere and I can find it for you if there are additional questions to buy me some time.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, yeah, for my understanding, before we talking about like 1,800, the business, I think most it's on the retail, they have the business size, right? So that's meaning our city have a lot of people walking home. That's good. That's a 1,000, based on the, the previous information, okay? And, and the 179, the delinquency license is the most, what kind of business? It's a restaurant or what kind of business they have?
I don't have that level of detail, Councilman, but when we bring back our update, I'm hoping that we also have an update on these numbers. And we'll be able to let you know how many of them have closed, how many new businesses. I'll, I'll be able to provide a breakdown of.
Thank you.
And I'll include that home occupancy number as well.
Okay, so yeah, it's for the new business license, how many? Okay, but how about the, like, last year? So how many restaurant, they request the outdoor, outdoor dining?
We facilitated a total of about 50. It's not a clear number because some of the plazas facilitated for a certain number of their tenants. So I would say 50 is a good, about 45 to 50 of the applications.
Okay. Because you increase, they like, maximum for the outdoor dining. So, so how many, like, business, they interesting to the, still keep going for the, for the outdoor dining?
We have been contacted by a couple of them. I think folks were getting a little nervous that we might sunset the program or as things open that it would completely go away. So we are letting them know that this is a process. It doesn't have a sunset date, but folks that are interested in the permanent, we are starting those conversations.
Okay. Yeah, because I want to see the number, is the, is the, a lot of people interesting or not, you know? Yeah, also consideration.
So far the contacts that we, so far the contacts that we've had have been a couple of businesses that have been more concerned about what's going to happen on June 15th as things reopen. Does this program completely go away? They're, they're already thinking about planning for the next couple of months.
Yeah, because the reason I, I understand that we, we use outdoor, outdoor dining to use the most for the parking space. So the, for the long run, it's, it's, I think it's, it's really need a consideration for the safety purpose, also for the, for the, for the parking space. So that's the consideration. All right. And yeah, thank you for the, your team to do the good report and, and I really thanks the, last year, I really, yeah, as for me, my image is our team is to do the really good job and to help the COVID-19, the business people. And most, most business, I, I, I got a feedback, it looks like they, they, they also like a city really do something to help them. So, yeah, thank you all, all of you and continue to help our business, hopefully, like we really do the, like, something, it's really like the, especially for the community, not, not just for business, also for the community, feel our city, it's business friendly to, yeah, help the community, understand each other, group each other. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. How about the council member here? Can you have comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to thank the staff for the work on this report. One thing I didn't really see a whole lot of, it's a great, I would say, report and marketing package. And I'd like to know how we're retaining our current businesses as well as working with our businesses through the pandemic. I mean, it's one thing to create a report, but we really, I, I haven't seen anything. Maybe I'm just out of touch on that, but I haven't seen anything that where we're actually helping our businesses, our, our distinct businesses. And so I really didn't see any discussing it, but how are we retaining them? How are we supporting them? Things like along those lines.
Thank you, Councilman. We continue to inform the business community, bring access to financial resources, informational webinars and things so that they can take advantage of the resources that are out there, financial and otherwise. We also, there is a good example, right now, there's a, a number of tenants in a building that's being acquired in a certain part of town that we are anticipating, may need to find a new location in the coming months. Rather than having these businesses go out of business or go out of town, we are going to reach out to them and work with the new owners so that we can provide site selection assistance. We're already engaged with other landlords that might be a good fit so that we can deliver them to new appropriate spaces and retain them as our businesses. We also, as we discussed with other businesses that are existing San Gabriel businesses, whether or not their sites are still appropriate for what they want to do, whether they have changed their business model or are looking for something that might be more appropriate to any shifts or changes in their business. We do have those discussions. So again, those, those are handled more on a case by case basis as we engage with the businesses. Claudia and I are also anticipating as things open up a little bit and it, and it is safer to start back up our business visitation program. That is a huge element of economic development. It really gives us a good pulse so that we're not prescriptive. We're hearing from the businesses what it is that they need so that we can deliver those services. So that is very much on the forefront of our plans in the next month or so as we reopen.
I mean, that's reassuring because that, that's kind of what I'd like to see in the report itself also because the, basically talked about sales tax, about business licenses, developments, but not really the businesses themselves. So maybe on the next update, if we can actually see what our efforts are and what our plans are, that'd be great.
You got it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, for me, I really appreciate our economic development staff for your hard work. Come up with this report and I remember, you know, what we did last year, just using the CARES funding. And we give out three programs for small business grant, 2,500. And I believe the 500 small businesses have applied. And because the limited funding, we aren't in order to, I don't remember exactly, less than 60. And the tenants relief program is a thousand dollars for every household. And, yeah, that was a great program, but also the seniors mill. One thing that I, I didn't ask, you know, is there a program to help the landlord? And I thought, well, I don't know, maybe this time because this American Rescue Plan, we received 7.51 million and that's almost 20 times more than the CARES Act funding. So I think this time we can sit aside a small portion of this 7.5 million dollars to continue with those three programs. And, you know, we can do the same thing. We reach out to our small business owners and, and our tenants relief program and seniors mill continues doing that. So I think we can, yeah, maybe this time we can even offer more because, you know, again, we, we still have that 400-some small businesses have applied, but didn't win that lottery drawing. So, yeah, maybe they still waiting. But I have a good news though, you know, because this is a seminar, a camp from the state treasurer, treasurer mom, and she talking about the funding, it's called a restaurant revitalization fund. So for every restaurants, you know, every, if they own several restaurants, they only can apply up to 10 million dollars. And if for just one single location, you know, physical location, that's up to 5 million dollars. So this is a huge, huge, and you can use that money until March 11, 2023. And it includes restaurants, food stands, food trucks, caterers, bars, pretty much everything, you know, breweries. And so you, all you have to do to show your your receipts during the COVID-19 and how much you lost. And this money, you don't have to pay back. It's not the loan. It's, it's and I, I, you know, when I saw this, I was, oh, it's unbelievable. But I think, you know, for our economic department, for, you know, we are going to, I don't know, I think I have to ask the city managers, are we still interested in doing the next rung of this program, you know, like from the CARES Act? And then maybe we can set aside small business grants and, and all that. But I guess has to be decided and approved by the council member, right? Is that, is that correct? That's right, Mayor. Now, we are still waiting from the federal treasury department for the regulations on that money. And as soon as we have regulations on how we can use the American Rescue Plan, we'll put that on an agenda and talk to the council about how we spend that or save that, put it in our, our reserves. Okay, that's great. Yeah, because again, this restaurant revitalization grant is part of American Rescue Plan. So this is a huge, huge help for our restaurant owners. And unfortunately, some of them already closed. They're not coming back. And I wish they, you know, just continue with their business, but unfortunately, some of them already closed. But again, how are we going to help them? Maybe we have to do a several studies again, you know, you, you, if you want to conduct the survey, gotta have a different languages. You know, 80% of our restaurant owners, they only read Chinese. So you gotta have something that they can understand their, your questions. So, you know, this is very important. You say not in English, nobody can understand, they're not going to answer. They're gonna, they're not going to do the survey for you. So I think this is very important, things that we have to consider. But again, I think this time we can even do much bigger program, you know, because the funding and, and, and again, we can make our business community more successful. And again, you know, I would appreciate all your hard work. And I don't mind do it again because I have that 3,000 hand sanitizer delivered to, to us next Thursday. So I'm gonna knock door everyone, you know, just hand them out the hand sanitizer, 3,000 of them. So no problem for me. It's a good exercise and I get to talk to people. Thank you.
Mayor, I had a comment before you close this item.
Yes.
Yes, so I. Yes. So I just wanted to, for the members of the public, to know that on page four and page six of the presentation, it does talk about the level of business assistance that has been provided. I think what happened was page five had the sales tax. So you had a good flow and then poof, you know, sales tax in fact kind of ruined the flow there. But there are some, you know, listed, but what economic development has done to help the individual businesses. And then it went over to page six also. So maybe, I guess, maybe more detailed, but I think it lists very, very well, in my opinion, you know, what is taking place. But as Councilmember can say, one size is not for all. So as we continue on with this conversation about the help that we're giving our businesses, you know, providing examples would be also helpful. I also like what was done in the package, page four, the kind of work that we're doing with our developers because we do have so many projects in the pipeline. So all of those have to kind of be rethought in the post-COVID world. But I did appreciate how you listed some of the work that you are doing with our developers. So just thought I would just point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That actually is something that the developers have shared. No other agency that they're working with is being this proactive. So they really appreciate us engaging with them, you know, partnering them with them on this effort and really trying to take the lead on some of these proactive measures.
Oh, well, before I forgot, because I've been approached by several other cities from out of country, other states. And so they want to learn about San Gabriel. And I remember maybe past five years, every time we go to this ICSC conferences and we prepare stacks of, you know, San Gabriel profiles pamphlets and in different languages. So I was wondering if economic development department can do the same thing, you know, because some of the project maybe is outdated, but we have the new projects and we can prepare that. And talking to whoever interesting, you know, coming to San Gabriel for business or for investment. And I think that's something we should be able to do because we already have the pretty much the database. So I think we should prepare that, you know, once if the ICSC is opened up. Yeah, it's, it's very important. We have that information. Thank you. Any others? Okay, Vice Mayor Ding.
Yeah. So I, yeah, I got the mayor Liao to mention the restaurant PPP. So I think they probably it's just started. So our city staff like still continue to like can help them to at least got us some information. Help our, our city business, the restaurant business can like they help them to which one website they can go for it. And also have the multi-language we can provide it. That's a lot of the businesses really like it because from last year, we have the multi-language. It's really help like my mayor Liao mentioned, the people, they just read Chinese or Spanish or Spanish, you know. So that's, it's really help. Another things I based on like, I hear that the public comments, maybe it's a good idea. So if we want to encourage the some business, it's really long term with our city. Maybe is, I don't know, that's, it's a property, we can do it. It's just like every like maybe five year, if they business with our city, five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, whatever the anniversary, the years, maybe we city website can like recognize this kind of business to let the people know, also like give its honor to them. Oh, thank you. You have the business, it's continued with our city, you know. So also it's really, if because I think that if the long-term, the business with our city, it's also, it's a preservation that our must need to, need to recognize to them, right? Yeah, that's my comments. Thank you.
Yeah, I have information for you or for everyone interested is the SBA Form 3172.
Okay.
It's a restaurant revitalization fund and application. So also they have a call center support. If you have any question, you don't know how to fill out the form, So it's all free, you know, and yeah, you can even work with the SBA long agents. I guess, you know, they somehow they can help you do this for free and so that is good for our, it's great news for our restaurant owners. So I, I think I encourage them, you know, all to apply. Okay, so yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. I would be remiss to forget to mention that Claudia and I are really great about getting this information out to the businesses by e-newsletter. So they have received the information about these financial resources, that the application period is due, who they can contact as partner agencies to help facilitate. I also want to mention to you, we haven't sent it out yet, but we do have six more upcoming PACE webinars. Some are in partnership with Charming China, so those will be available in language on a variety of business resources and information. And it'll be starting this month through the summer. So as soon as we have that calendar confirmed, I'll be able to share that with you in our community.
Great. Thank you so much. So with that, I guess, no more, huh? No more discussion about this item? City clerk, is there a public comments for other? I don't see any in tonight's agenda or I don't see there's any public comment section, no?
Yes, Mayor, there is a public comment section, but we do not have any public comment for the second general section or for this business item. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So there's no public comment. Next item is city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor Liao and members of the council. Just wanted to, in the wake of our press conference we held this afternoon, just wanted to thank all of our firefighters, our police department and all of the outside agencies that not only helped us fight the fire nearly a year ago in July, that very severely damaged our treasurer mission. But also to thank all those agencies in helping bring a suspect to hopefully to justice in as a result of that fire in the arson case. And I think Father John, I'm going to plagiarize his statement. I think he said it best during his statements this afternoon when he asked for justice tempered with mercy. I thought that was a particularly fitting statement. So thank you to everybody involved. Thank you for bringing that arsonist hopefully to justice tempered with mercy. And I thought we did a good job as a city and looked great in front of the world as part of that press conference. So kudos to all of you and to the council for being there as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. So next item is council comments and conference meeting reports. Anyone? I see Councilmember Hu.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. And as you know, that May is also Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And if, if you have not already requested for, you know, a sort of appropriate proclamation for our next council meeting, I would like to formally request that. And a community group whose founder is actually also San Gabriel resident, this group is called Compassion and SGB. They're affiliated with another group called, that's called Compassion in Oakland. What they do is there, it's a group of young people that offers to chaperone elder, elderly folks who feel like, you know, they might need some company to help keep them safe. And I think that's, you know, it's just a fantastic program that they're just completely just volunteers, a community-based organization. I think they have over 200 volunteers right now. And so you can find them on the website compassionandsgb.org or compassion SGB on Instagram. And they also reached out and they'll be, are organizing an event for May 22. And I think that looks like it'll be a really nice community event also to be able to both celebrate Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, but also raise, continue to raise awareness and, and, you know, combat the types of anti-Asian incidents that we've seen around the country. You know, we're fortunate that I think we have experienced, I mean, at least to our knowledge, although I have heard, you know, I do still get texts from community members who are know of attacks, violent attacks on particularly elderly Asian Americans. And not, not that I've heard it yet in San Gabriel, but in, within LA County. And then, and those victims, you know, oftentimes not, not being willing to report or not feeling, not feeling maybe even empowered enough to report those incidents. So it is an issue that continues to, you know, to, to, I think, haunt and plague our, our country. But, you know, with efforts like the efforts of this group called Compassion SGB, I think, you know, we've been doing, and I think the efforts that, you know, Mayor Liao, you, you've mentioned a similar group of perhaps some older volunteers who also walk with, walk with members of the community who feel like they, they need the protection. And also the efforts of our police department and Chief Harris. So, you know, I feel like we responded to this in a very, in a very good way. And I just wanted to put in a plug for this group, Compassion SGB, and also the event that they're organizing on May 22. And I want to thank all the various, I think they're just currently working with the community services staff to just make sure that everything is, you know, the logistics are done properly, permits are, they have the proper permits, all that kind of stuff. But looking forward to that event. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. See, Councilwoman Minchaca.
Yes. I wanted just to talk a little bit more about the press conference today, just in case people aren't aware of it. We had media, we had the press, we had television interviews in multiple languages. I did two of them in Spanish and a couple in English. And I know Mayor Lau, Vice Mayor Ding and Councilmember Hu, they were also being interviewed. But I was really proud of our group. It was led by Antonio Negrete, who's our fireman, who's a PIO person. Let it included, of course, Chief Wallace, who thanked all the agencies and all the agencies were standing with us. And of course, Father John, who just kind of brought it together in a very calm with mercy sentiment. But, you know, they, just so the public knows, you know, an arson suspect is in custody. His name was revealed and the case has been filed with the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office. More details will be forthcoming. They were a little hesitant to talk about motive until the case is actually in court. More of those details will come out. So, but, but at least we know a lot. Probably we would love to know more, obviously, but, but it was a time for us, for us to come together collectively. And then we just, again, just thank the staff for doing a great job. You know, we all continue to support our mission and whatever your religious faith is, it is part of our community, a very strong part of our community. So thank you to everyone who was there. And that was all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor Ding?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Liao. Yeah, it's, yeah, I also joined like Councilmember Mchenka say that this afternoon, the press and it's a really good press that also the, it's a good thing to let the, because a lot of community, they really want to know the, what's going on for the last year, the mission fire. So today, at least I have some result, let the community know that. And a lot of press coming and included like Asia press or Chinese press too. Yeah, I, I think we, the council member Hu and Mayor Liao also have a chance, me, self, it's a talk to our Chinese press. They really care our community. So hopefully, so we can moving forward. And, and, and we will see that mission will be reopened soon. They, I hear about a property this August. Okay, it's, it's good for our community. And also like echo to the council member Hu, this month, it's Asia American Heritage Month. So it's, it's recently, it's really important, especially for Asia American, the community. So like, everybody already know that from the last one month regarding the stop Asia hay. So this kind of movement, so it's continued there. I, I glad, so I was, I was in every city. Do that really fast and like a month ago and our rest of the city, I hear about like El Monte or the Ahambra and even like Montebello. So all the community, the supporter, our Asia community. So we, yeah, we want to use this kind of moment to express our love, stop hay and, and also promote our Asia heritage, that we do a lot of the Asia American do that out of the like good work for the our community. Thank you, Mayor Liao.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. How about Councilmember Hilton? You have any report?
Hi there, Mayor. No reports, but I would like to request a future agenda item. I mean, I talked to Mark about this earlier. I've been contacted by many residents lately and it's getting more and more so about crime rates in San Gabriel. Petty crimes, you know, just different cars being broken into burglaries. And subsequently, I came in contact with the, about four different LA district, deputy district attorneys. And I'm not sure if you're aware, but five cities have put forth a resolution for a vote of no confidence in our district attorney. And I'd like to put that on an agenda item for discussion. The cities are La Mirada, Whittier, Beverly Hills, Lancaster and Pico Rivera. And the reason I think it's a good idea to agenda this is so that we can have a good discussion about our priorities as a city. The reason I said I contacted the LA district attorneys is because they're willing to present on this item. So they would be available for questions from council. They could, if it's agenda, they could answer public questions. I think it'd be a great forum for people to get a peek into why our crime has been significantly increasing. Anybody that receives our crime report, see they're getting longer and longer. You know, we've, we've lived through 10 years of Prop 47, Prop 57, AB 109. So the last thing we need to do is to put more criminals and more crime into our streets and into our neighborhood. Since December, there's been three, three special directives that I think are just as bad, if not worse than AB 47, I'm sorry, Prop 47, 57 and AB 109. And I won't go too far into them, but I'll just kind of give a summary of what they are. The first one is Special Directive 20-06, which actually prevents individual district, deputy district attorneys for asking for bail for bail for any misdemeanor, which means you don't get misdemeanors. So someone already in jail on bail would be released instantly and they were as soon as this came out. They can't even ask for them for misdemeanors, non-serious felonies, which I'm not sure what that means because it wasn't defined. But I'm assuming it means probably, you know, drug use or something that's felony level. Because felony means minimum of a year in jail. So I'm not sure how something not serious gets you a year in jail. That does, that those two things don't make sense to me, but somehow it makes sense in that direction. And then the third category is non-violent felony. So I'd assume that's anything else where it's rise, it's, it is serious, but it's non-violent. So he's, he was specific as to his words. The next is Special Directive 20-07, which prevents any charges. I mean, you cannot be charged in LA County by a district attorney for over a dozen misdemeanors. And it sounds like, oh, that's not a big deal. I'm going to read the misdemeanors that if you do in LA County, you won't be charged. You, the DA's are prevented from charging trespassing. It means I can walk right onto your lawn and do whatever I want, as long as I want. And the DA's, the cops can come and bother me, but I can just go walk away. They could even pull me into jail, but I can't be, I can't, actually can't be charged with anything disturbing the peace. That means I can make a lot of noise right next door to you all day long. DA won't prosecute it. Cops can keep coming back and, you know, using our cops' time a lot. And you can see where this is going, but you won't be charged. Criminal threats, somehow that's not a problem for this district attorney, making criminal threats. Drinking in public, public intoxication under the influence of controlled substances. Driving without a valid license, driving with a suspended license, drug paraphernalia possession, minors in possession of alcohol. Loitering, loitering to commit prostitution and resisting arrest. So yes, those are all misdemeanors. But you can imagine how hard, how difficult it is to be a police officer, knowing you're going to get called on every one of those types of disturbances. And then showing up and telling the residents, oh, sorry, I'm not going to bother arresting them because they're not going to be prosecuted anyway. And the reason I say this, those are the people that are now calling me saying, hey, I thought you were here, you know, trying to protect us. We elected you because we want to be protected. And I get, I call the cops because there's a guy in my neighborhood literally screaming and yelling and saying he's going to kill people, but it's not directed at anyone in specific. And the cops say they're not going to arrest him because the district attorney won't prosecute. So that's Special Directive 2007. Special Directive 2008 are no sentence enhancements. And the reason that makes it, makes a big deal is because sentence enhancements, whether you agree with them or not, are the law. The three strikes law is a sentence enhancement, for example. Then your third strike, you get enhanced sentence, gang enhancements. When you do something in furtherance of a gang, you get more time. Because they figure if you're doing it in advancement of, of a gang, you're probably not doing something on accident. Then there's firearm, use of a firearm in a crime is an enhancement. He's pulled that away. Somehow he's all about gun control unless a criminal is doing it, then there's no enhancement. So as you see, these, these directives actually do harm to our community, real harm to our community. Because it's a disincentive for the police to even bother enforcing crime. And so we as a council, just a few meetings ago, we, we put forth our legislative platform. These are our policy. One of those policies that we as a council said was important enough to put into our, into our legislative platform. Should any bills come up, our, I'll read the public safety section. Support of federal and state, support of federal, state and local assistance for police, fire and homeland security initiatives. And any measures that contribute to public safety. Support legislation that strengthens local law enforcement's ability to ensure public safety and prevent and fight crime. I would say that all three of these directives are in direct confrontation of our legislative platform. And I believe the views of this council. Additionally, the, the district attorney has been very clear as to oppose and fight politically. Anything that would basically be fall within our legislative platform to protect our residents. I've been quite vocal about it. And in, in short, he's trying to make, because he was the district attorney in San Francisco and you see what, where that city is right now. I have friends and relatives there and I will tell you, people don't want to be outside on the street in San Francisco. He, that's where LA County will head if we continue this course. I don't want St. Gabriel to have people on the street doing drugs and not getting prosecuted and other things that I will tell you, there's an app for that in San Francisco. And you don't want to have that app on your phone because it turns your whole map brown. I'll just tell you that. So if we're not enforcing crime, it spreads and it spreads like a virus, just like COVID-19. The difference is we can't build an immunity to crime and we can't be vaccinated from it. The only thing we have is deterrence and without enforcement, we don't get deterrence. So I really implore this council to get this on an agenda very soon. So that we are leaders on this issue and not followers, because I guarantee you, we're not, if we do it next, we're not even going to be the sixth city. We might not even be the 16th, but we really need to get this on, on as a very serious discussion. And I would like this to, if, if council agrees to get that on the agenda. Have Chief Harris briefed to speak into the official role as well as invite the district attorneys in, the deputy district attorneys. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harrington. I heard you and I know, you know, from the previous AB 109, Prop 47, 57. However, because the, the jail is all, you know, over occupied. And it's the federal law, you know, asks governor, do we release all these prisoners? So there's, there's got to be some middle way to solve this issue. However, St. Gabriel, as you understand, you know, our crime rate has been reduced 40%. So we're not that bad. But I, I think it's, it, it's possible that we could have this type of discussion. As a matter of fact, the St. Gabriel Economic Partnership, they, they have a speaker. That's District Attorney George Gaston. He will be talking and so maybe we all can attend that meeting and understand what his position, you know. And, and, and maybe we have better understanding of all these things. Why that, you know, we're not strict with the, the criminals anymore. But maybe they have a certain explanation. And, and as a matter of fact, California tax payer has to pay 80,000 per year, 80,000 per year for every prison in the jail. So it's a, it's a very, very large amount of money that taxpayer to pay. But of course, you know, safety is, is the utmost securing for our residents. So I think we can talk about that. And, and I guess city manager will work with you and, you know, I bring this topic for councils discussion. So that's, yeah, so thank you. Thank you for bringing it up. Another thing is, yeah, I attend the today's press conference for the mission fire. I used to be a docent for mission for many years and mission is a dear heart to me. I know every single stone, every single object in a museum. And so when the fire broke out, I, I was devastated. I just couldn't believe it. But anyway, I also believe the church has the strength to, yeah, they, they rebuilt it right away. And it's, it's, it's open end of August for 250 anniversary celebration. So I think the city will participate in this celebration. However, every year, CEO of St. Gabriel and also City of Los Angeles and the county. We also have a walk to, to downtown El Pueblo. And I don't know, I haven't heard anything about that event. Because usually that's the beginning of September. So, you know, if we are planning to have that event, I don't know, Rebecca Director Perez, you know anything about that? The walk to downtown LA?
Thank you, Mayor Liao. Actually, I have reached out to, this is Director Perez. I have reached out to City of LA. I have not received a response from them as to whether or not that event will be held this year. So I, I've reached out and they've not yet responded. I think, I believe what, what happened last year was that we advised that, that there was not an event being held, but that people were able to do the walk on their own if they chose to do so.
Okay, well, I guess, well, it's too early, you know, maybe they can find out in July or something. And, yeah, because it's even a bigger event at the downtown LA. It's all a celebration with music and dances. Yeah, but it's a, it's a good tradition that we should follow, but that's it. So, well, I'm going to adjourn the meeting to our next regular city council meeting. And that will be held on Tuesday, May 18, 2021 at 6:30 PM. So thank you, everyone, for joining this wonderful, you know, council meeting. And I, I felt I'm overwhelmed because I see my good friend is leaving the library. So, anyway, thank you so much. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.